We will be crossing over to County Hall, where Parliament's Joint Select Committee on Proposed Changes to the Electoral Laws is expected to begin public hearings today. This comes amid criticism of the amendments. The committee has invited the public and various stakeholders. And what you can see there are some of the stakeholders that are currently seated there at the County Hall as they wait for that session to begin. Stakeholders are there to submit their memoranda ahead of the hearings, which are expected to run until Thursday. Nasser leader Raile Odinga has demanded an unconditional withdrawal of the changes before he can agree to participate in the repeat presidential election, which is slated for October the 26th. But President Uhuru Kenyatta, on the other hand, says the changes to the electoral laws will guarantee transparency by curbing any form of malpractice. Francisca Shuri is at County Hall, and we'll be talking to him later. The public hearings are set to begin any time now. And from what we understand, stakeholders are already in attendance, including the public, as we wait for Parliament's Joint Select Committee to make their way there ahead of discussions and talks on the amendments to the electoral laws. We were also live in Nairobi University Alia, where student leaders are calling for the immediate resignation of the institution's vice chancellor. The University of Nairobi has been closed indefinitely, and we are staying with that developing story. Back here in studio, to continue our discussion, Jubilee MP has filed a petition to compel opposition leaders Raile Odinga and Kalonzo Mousioka to participate in the October 26th repeat polls. For South Member of Parliament David Kossing, says the attempt by Nasser to boycott the election will trigger a constitutional crisis. Mushimiwa Jude Jomol, you are in the know on this issue, I believe. Let's talk about why you believe that Nasser's move to threaten not to participate in this election will lead to a constitutional crisis?
I think first I need to correct you there. It's not Jubilee Party which did this. This was an individual Member of Parliament in his own individual capacity, Honorable Kossing, who took that petition to the High Court of Kenya. And from what I-
He's an independent candidate?
No, he is a member of the Jubilee Party. But it is not Jubilee Party which went to court. It is Honorable Kossing-
It's an individual?
As an individual, in his own capacity, who went to court. And what he wants the court to pronounce itself on is that the Supreme Court of Kenya made a ruling that there shall be an election within 60 days. A fresh election should be conducted by IABC. Now, this election to be held on 26th of this month, Nasser, through its party leader Raile Odinga, have said that there would be no election. We do not know what mechanisms they are going to use to make sure that there shall be no election. Rumor has it that, as you have read, the constituency says that for any presidential election to take place, it has to, every constituency have to participate. And rumor has it that they want to make sure that some constituencies do not have an election, so that then they will go back to the Supreme Court and claim that this election was not constitutional because in this or that constituency, there was no election.
Do you see this actually happening? We do know that in all these constituencies, there are Nasser strongholds, and therefore, they may be able to pull this off.
That's what I'm saying. And that is why he is making this prayer to the court, that if this Nasser makes it a, they are threat a reality, that there shall be no election in this particular constituency because of their own making. We want the court to make, rather, Honorable Kossing wants the court to make a pronouncement that if IABC have called for an election, and you as an interested party make sure that there is no election, then you are performing an act of treason.
And, you know, just talking about what exactly Nasser intends to do. In this petition here, in this six-page petition by Kossing, he says, "You have publicly threatened as Nasser that unless your demands for new electoral framework are met, you will either prevent, impede, subvert, or otherwise ensure by fair or foul, legal or illegal means that the first fresh presidential election will not be held." How exactly do you intend to stop this election from going on?
First and foremost, I would say that obviously whoever has gone to court is right, but I would call him a busybody because you cannot simply say that you are forcing somebody to get into participation in an election.
I think that is not the particular, what that particular petition is about. It is not forcing anybody to go to an election. It is that translation, that if you are called to an election, and then you do not participate, then our constituency says that in an election where two people are the contenders, and one does not participate, then the one who participates should automatically be pronounced as the president.
No, so what I was saying is that it may not even merit discussion possibly, that petition that is putting across to compel the Right Honourable Raile and Kalonzo Mousioka to participate in this.
Once again-
And the point that we are putting, the point we are putting across here is, and that will be the end of it. They're desperate, you can see desperation. You saw the other day, they were even preventing Kalonzo leave the country. They think maybe when he leaves, they will not come back to participate in the election. And therefore, what we are saying is this, the issue here is that the desperation that they have cannot be sorted out by trying to use shortcuts through Parliament, some section of Members of Parliament, or either way. It cannot be sorted out if both sides sit down and sort out this issue. And that is, that is for-
I mean, let's just look at a hypothetical situation where Nasser makes good death threat and actually does not participate in this election. Then what happens?
You see, that is the question. And in the court of public opinion, there's a bit of a worry that if you read this petition, it's asking that certain statements were made, that they would subvert, that they would create a situation where elections will not be, will not take place in certain constituencies, in certain strongholds. So the question is, as Kenyans, what happens next to the electoral process? If I'm not able to go vote in a particular polling station because there are a group of people who have denied me access to vote, then I am being denied my fundamental right to vote. That is the question we're now-
And that's why we are saying it is a treason. You are stopping people from exercising or enjoying their rights that are enshrined in the Constitution. In any case, how can you cause violence? How can you cause fire? Then you rush to the court and say, "Oh, we were not able to have an election because there was fire," and you are the one who is causing that fire. And that is what this petition is all about.
The practical situation is this, and I think we need to tell the people, in case, in the event, elections don't happen on the dates or within the days, there will be a caretaker government that will be in place. And the caretaker government would then prepare for good elections. I can tell you for sure, even Jubilee, sorry, IABC, some of them must salute them, that they are working under duress and a lot of pressure from, you know, they are fearing anything could happen. And as you see, now, some Members of Parliament are going to even to make some laws to either negate or remove powers of the Chair of the IABC and stuff. So clearly it tells you, Lilian, this election is, will not be possibly an election until some minimums are met, until a situation is put that provides a level ground for everyone.
Is that what, is that what Nasser is pushing for, a caretaker government? There's been talk, that, talk has dominated political panels that, in fact, Nasser is not actually interested in this election, but is more inclined towards a situation whereby we will have to have a caretaker-
Nasser knows that they will never gather the numbers to be elected into State House. They know they will never win in a fair election in a level playing field. And that is why they are trying all these tricks. And that is why they are trying everything to make sure that the election of 26th will not happen because their main interest, and this has been said time and time again, their main interest is to have that caretaker government. Because they know that if a caretaker government happens, they'll be able to put their people in the caretaker government.
No, what you're saying is this, we're only analyzing the possible situations, the possible scenarios that could be happening. We're not looking at, election is not a do or die, Lilian. It's about the country, it's about the future of this country. And we are saying, for this to happen, let's give Kenyans free, fair, and credible elections, so that they're happy. So how can that happen? A level ground is provided by ensuring that the things are done as some parties are requesting. And then, of course, we go for an election. No one is fearing for an election. And if at all they feel that, why did they not open the server? They were actually instructed by the Supreme Court, please go and open the server. They never did up to date. Why? And they claim that they have numbers. So it's not about, let us not, let us not-
I think Muli is confusing, confusing IABC for Jubilee.
On the IABC issue-
Jubilee did not have the servers.
Gentlemen, on the IABC issue, we will note a way forward after today's deliberations and after today's talks between the two sides, both sides of the political divide and other stakeholders. Mary, let's get your input on this.
I go back to the court of public opinion. We have two points of view. We have the Attorney General telling us that there will be no constitutional crisis. Then we have Moses Wetangula on the other side saying, yes, there will be. So I put it to both of you, will there be a constitutional crisis or not?
To me, I would say is that if it is not done within the 60 days, obviously, there's a crisis. And then it's not a crisis as such, then what can happen? The only way is to have an interim, what we call the caretaker. And that is what Nasser is not provided for. We know we have the numbers, we can win if it's free and fair anyway.
But the question-
We are saying, and that tells you, and that tells you that we are not dying for the president as such.
But the question out there is, this was the game plan all along, that Nasser did not really want elections, but wanted a caretaker government.
And I don't even know what-
Please respond to that, Peter.
Yeah, that I'm saying, and I kept, I've kept on saying, we have not said that we are interested in this. We're only saying the possible scenarios, that in the event it doesn't happen within the 60 days. Doesn't happen, what then would happen? And I think that's what Lilian asked. If it doesn't happen within the 60 days, or it doesn't happen on the 26th, then what would happen? And then we say, what would happen is this, then we'd have an interim or a caretaker government that would then prepare for an election that is credible, fair, and free.
And, and, and this is a no-brainer here. There's a viewer here who is saying, "How do you expect to have an exercise in less than a month's time with such daily demands?" Nasser has demands daily. We have 22 days to go to the polls. Stakeholders are totally against these electoral reforms. But then again, stakeholders are also calling on you as Nasser to allow the IABC to carry out this-
Maybe even before he was there, I would also like to remind them, apart from these three demands they are making now, if you go one year behind, the number of petitions and demands that they have made, from when they started complaining about IABC, the IABC commissioners have been changed, IABC secretaries have been changed, everything has been asked, they have been granted. But still, whenever you give them what they want, they are asking for something new. And I'm telling you, Lilian, even if they are granted what they are asking for, they'll still make more demands-
The National Assembly has a say in all of this, Mary, where you see the country being held hostage by these political parties, by both sides of the political, these main parties, that's Jubilee and Nasser. And then you see a parliament that is dominated by Jubilee. Can Parliament put an end to this statement? And what essentially should be their role in all of this?
Well, first and foremost, to understand what the constitutional crisis is all about is that this issue was not foreseen in the Constitution. So there is the ambiguity around it. Right now, with the electoral amendments being discussed in County Hall, I think that is a good way forward in the sense that the public can come in and give their ayes or nays. They can ask pertinent questions, questions that my fellow panelists have brought out. Why is it that you need to change whoever it is who will read out the presidential results? Not just the returning officer who is the chairperson, but anyone else? Why is it that you need to put an and or an or in the new laws? Why do you need to bring in new clauses? These are some of the issues we need to discuss. Remember, we are a country in transition. We've come through multi-party politics. We're now getting into issue-based politics. The issue of numbers, as pointed out by Honourable Jude, I hope and pray will be a thing of the past. I hope that we will be looking at issues that pertain to our health workers, our schooling system. And so, this is an opportunity for our national legislative body to ask the public, give your opinion, ask us questions. That would be my opinion.
And even as we talk about this, indeed, just moving away from this political rhetoric and political talk, the economy has taken a beating. There's talk of a looming drought. We do know that the Nasas are still on strike 100-plus days later. Mushimiwa Jude, in terms of, you know, just how this political climate is having a trickle-down effect, not only on the economy, but also on other really critical issues around the country and its development, what would you say would ideally be the way forward? Even as we await the talks with the IABC and both sides of the political divide today?
Once this election is over, it will be time to build our country. And we've been having droughts, every couple of years we have drought. Basically because we rely on rain to do our agriculture. And I think we should be past that. We are a modern nation, we are a nation that is agricultural, and we should have enough water reservoirs, dams and water ponds, so that even our small-scale farmer can be able to-
But that's the talk that we are not hearing currently because our leaders are busy politicking. We're back in the campaign season, there's a lot of voter fatigue. We do not know whether or not Wanjiko will be headed to the polls come the 26th of October, because people are dealing with other issues.
You cannot hear it, Lilian. It's like trying to talk on your phone when you are in a club playing loud music. You know, the music have to calm down for you to be able to talk on your phone. So we need to calm down all these rhetorics that we are having. And what we need to do is to have this election done with, then we can talk about other things. Focus now on development, focus on food security for our country. And I am sure if proper things are done, then we shall not be having these droughts every now and then. Let us build dams, let us build water ponds, let us bring back into our agriculture the people who used to advise farmers, especially small-scale farmers, on how to do their agriculture. Because if the small-scale farmer can be able to feed himself, then we can have a lot of grain reserve from our large-scale farmers. We have the capacity as a country to feed ourselves and even to export the surplus.
Let's take a look at what's happening in Neri County. There's a lot of comments that are coming in here, and I'll be reading those out to you. But before that, let's talk to Martin Munene, who is in Neri County. Let's get reactions from there on the electoral laws amendments and indeed on the fact that Jubilee and Nasser are expected to meet the IABC later today. Martin Munene, what are people on the ground saying?
All right. The election laws, and what are the people on the ground? Like we know, both sides of the political divide have made some demands. For example, Nasser is saying that there has to be some changes in the IABC. And on the side of Jubilee is insisting that they will push forward with the agenda of changing the election law. And with me today is the Speaker of the Neri County Assembly, Honourable John Kawusha, who's going to be giving us an insight into this just to help us know what the Neri leadership and indeed the people of Neri are saying in relation to these issues. Kindly can join me here, and apologies, it's a bit windy here. Kindly just kindly look at the screen and help us understand as a Neri leader and as a resident, what is your take on the laws that Jubilee is amending? And also, help us understand what is your take on the proposed meeting between Jubilee and Nasser leadership with the IABC to try resolve the issues surrounding the elections?
First of all, I would like to send my greetings to Lilian Muli this morning. And one of the things I would want to say is that we have the Supreme Court ruling that was done just recently. And it identified a few areas where we need to have legislation which is done to ensure that we have sealed up any loopholes that may have caused what the Supreme Court referred to as the irregularities and the illegalities. And some of those areas have already been picked out by the Parliament. And they are the ones that have attracted the kind of review of the law that you are seeing today. And if you remember very clearly, the Supreme Court, or the CJ Maraga said very clearly that if the election is done in such an environment, in such a way that it was done last time, and the same kind of illegalities and regularities are reported again, then in that case, he will have no other option other than to declare another ruling to cancel the presidential election. And who want to get to that level in this country? Indeed, we want to put a kind of a pitfall because we can see it. And so, one of the things that the Parliament has then set out to do is to review the laws, so that we can seal all those loopholes and we can ensure that the elections are going to be done in a transparent, in a credible, in a verifiable manner. And so, I do not see why there is so much hullabaloo about the review of the law. And as we are talking now, there is public participation that is going on. Now, I noted that some of the Members of the international community came out yesterday to say that that kind of review doesn't need to be done at a time like this. And I wondered, what is the idea? Because they're talking of the time which is limited. But look at it. It's settled, the presidential election. But it was also given 60 days, which is- Look at the demands which are coming from the Nasser Brigade, that you must have what they are calling the irreducible minimums taken care of, including doing away with critical staff in the Commission. And in a way, putting roadblocks which kind of incapacitate our capacity to actually do an election in 60 days, or even now, as we talk, in 20 days that are remaining. Now, you see, this is something that the international community also need to look at, that the kind of demands that are coming to disenfranchise the IABC as a Commission, especially coming from the Brigade. You know, these are some of the things that we need to weigh into and actually also discourage. But when it comes to looking at the laws, it is important that we seal all the areas that were seen to be a source of problems. And so, I think it is good that we look at those issues a little bit more objectively. It's good that we look at those issues with a clear mind and knowing that these are things that are going to help us, they are laws that are going to help us as a country to safeguard a good presidential election come 26th of October this month.
All right, and maybe on the same, just to ask, the changes, aren't the changes going to affect the preparedness of the IABC in terms of delivering the elections on the scheduled date 26th?
No, the laws that have been proposed and the laws that are going to be passed by the Parliament, they do not have a direct impact on the logistical preparedness of preparing for this election. No, what they do have is that they are creating a legal framework which then the judiciary shall operate when deciding the cases that- For example, one of the things that is being proposed is to have a higher threshold in terms of judiciary or the-
Thanks for that, Martin Munene. We lost his signal, but very good points coming there from Kawusha. And back here in studio, let's talk about what he pointed out just before we were cut off, Mary. The fact that if indeed Parliament approves these amendments to the electoral laws, that the IABC will find itself in a very dicey situation.
Well, first I must point out an issue he raised. He said the international community was not allowing the IABC to perform its role. The international community actually pointed out that the IABC is an independent body mandated to run the election. And therefore, it should be allowed to do its job. So that one was very clear from the international community. Insofar as the amendments are concerned, the question now is, like I had pointed out earlier, the country is divided into two. How do we run an election based on laws that half the electorate will not find very comfortable? How does this translate into free, fair, transparent elections? That will now be the question everybody will be asking. So it's very dicey at the moment where that is concerned.
Your reaction, Peter?
First of all, I want to tell Kenyans that Kenya is not in a very difficult situation. First and foremost, after the Supreme Court ruling, Kenya is standing on very strong in terms of independence of institutions. And therefore, we must not see this as something that is going to take this country into whatever situations. But it will depend again on how we are going to manage this situation. And I agree, IABC may be in a difficult, again, if they make these laws that they would say they are going to make these laws. It will require time, even IABC to internalize this, to see, to make sure that now these new laws that are being made by this Parliament, we must internalize, we must train our returning officers and presiding officers. Where is the time to do all these things? And that's what we are saying. Really, we must be very careful in what we are doing. Because that would be critical, that would be critical.
Some civic education from you, Mushimiwa. Somebody here is asking, is saying, "There's nothing like a caretaker government in the Constitution." Secondly, can this Peter clearly say how they will stop the election? He's calling you this Peter. But let's begin with you. I think he's a bit confused over what exactly a caretaker government is and what a Nusum Kater government is, which is what people have been saying Nasser has been pushing for. So just, you know, just to separate these two and what essentially it means for us to find ourselves in a situation where we would need a caretaker government to lead the country as we handle what would then be a constitutional crisis, or what a Nusum Kater government or a coalition government would be?
Even before going there, I want to slaughter this elephant that they are creating, that the rules we are making are going to make it so difficult for IABC to operate. There is nothing new that is being introduced. It's only the practice that has been happening that is being enhanced. For example, in the elections that we just concluded, there was electronic transmission. And finally, before the elections were announced, it is manual transmission that was awaited for. So we are not introducing anything new. We are just legislating that, that there shall be electronic transmission and there shall be manual transmission. So that does not affect the operation of IABC at all. The second one, we are saying that if you are an IB official, you are a returning officer or a presiding officer, and you have this form, and the law says that this form must be stamped. The law says that this form must be signed. The law says that you must enter this information in the original form, and you did not do it, then you shall be liable to be imprisoned for five years. How does that affect the operation of IABC? It just gives you the consequences of what is going to happen if you do not follow the law. So if you are going to be bribed by 5,000 shillings so that you can use the wrong form, then you'll be waiting for a five-year jail term to go and spend your 5,000 shillings that you have received as a bribe. That is what we are doing. There is nothing strange that is being introduced. It's just making sure that things are going to happen in the proper way. As for the caretaker government, to me, that is a strange animal. Because to me and in my understanding of law, the president will remain as the president with his government until a new president is elected. That is what the law says. The Nusum Kater government is a mirage that is being brought about by the Nasser.
No, I don't think it is fair to say that it's an animal by Nasser. We've never talked over Nusum Kater thing. And for sure, we have no reason whatsoever to talk about-
Some people call it Nusum Kater, others call it caretaker government. You know, it depends on which language you're speaking.
To me, to me, it's not the same. I would think that Nusum Kater is a coalition.
This bottled down to, should there be no president that is sworn in if there is no election, then who takes over?
That is what we are saying. If now it is not done within the 60 days, these are the possible scenarios. One is that the Speaker of National Assembly will then temporarily be in charge as we prepare for an election and our president. And in that kind of a, how do you call that? It's a caretaker, you'll be now in charge of this particular period before we organize ourselves. And that is there.
The scenario that Peter is putting-
Let me finish. And therefore, when we are talking over a caretaker government, we are saying, yes, it's supposed to have a president for this, and we don't have a president. And therefore, we need an interim arrangement to have somebody take care of the situation before we have an election. And that is what is happening.
The question I would ask is, then what is the difference between a temporary incumbent president and having the Speaker of the National Assembly running this caretaker government? Because both would not have certain powers.
He doesn't have mandate to do that, to run the government, the president. How do you say the incumbent, he has no mandate whatsoever.
As per the Constitution, the Speaker of the National Assembly will only run the government with the absence of the president and his deputy. Because in, for any reason, if the president becomes incapacitated, the deputy president takes charge. And the scenario that Honourable Member is quoting will only happen in the absence of both the president and his deputy.
And this is what is going to happen, because then they will not be there.
But the president has a legal mandate to lead this country for five years. The five years are not yet over. The five years are not yet, his term is still on. He has the right to go on being president until an election is held and a new president is either sworn or he is sworn again.
And Jubilee are pushing for these laws And Jubilee are pushing for these laws so that if at all NASA chooses not to participate in this repeat presidential election, then automatically President Urukenyata will be re-declared the winner of this presidential vote.
The, the, the amendments that we are doing have nothing to do with the presidency. The, the, the amendments we are doing are with the electoral law to make sure that we have, uh, an election taking place, an election that will be simple, free, fair and transparent. And to ensure that the will of the people who will go and line up and vote on that day is what is going to be announced at the end of the day.
Is there a problem with the country's current electoral process? Do you think that these amendments are geared towards improving this electoral process? Are they geared towards suiting Jubilee's interests?
Now, that's a very dicey question you asked me. Um, the electoral processes were very ambiguous in certain areas. And that's what Jubilee wants to address. When we look at the Supreme Court ruling, they addressed the issue of the processes. They did not address the issue of hacking. They did not address other issues. It was mainly the processes. Um, that's why you had the two dissenting judges arguing that was a minor issue. And they felt that those were not legal issues. So what Jubilee is trying to do right now is to ensure that come the next election, even down the line, as Honorable Peter has pointed out, posterity, that we will have laws that will ensure we are not in this situation. Remember again, I'm saying this is a country in transition. And this is actually a very good thing that we're going through right now, that we address these bottlenecks before they become too difficult for us to deal with.
And then again, Peter, like Mary here is saying, uh, in the Supreme Court ruling, you know, the irregularities were in the processes, the systematic and systemic failures. And yet NASA is calling for reforms that are concentrated on individuals who the Supreme Court ruling found no fault in.
And who, those, those, some of those rulings were actually functionalities of functions of a certain office. Who are holding this office? Who is responsible? Who is the CEO of the Electoral Commission? And that is why we say the CEO should take responsibility. Because when you are saying that the I T system failed and so forth, there must have been somebody in charge of that. Then who should take responsibility? Obviously, it's the CEO. If there are issues to do with the voter and the processes, there must be somebody head of that institution. Who is this? And therefore, when you are saying that we shouldn't leave anyone, somebody must take responsibility. If I were a Chiloba by now, to save my name, I would have resigned long time ago. And that is the safest way to go. Although I'm told what he's planning to do is doing all manner of manipulations of the systems now. So that then he can resign when it's very few days. That's what he is planning to do.
Lilian, I think, uh, this is another double speak by NASA, uh, where the court, the Supreme Court made its pronouncement and it was very particular that it cannot lay the blame on any particular person. And here is, uh, NASA who have now made their own judgment. And they have picked on particular people who they think are the ones who are to be indicted. What, on what basis did they do this? It is the Supreme Court which had the mandate to point out for us that these are the people who have caused all these problems, but not, not, not NASA. We cannot listen to NASA about that because they have their own political interest in this.
My brother should understand that Supreme Court has no criminal, has no, has no mandate on criminals.
What are your bare minimums? First, it was the, the, the individuals that you believe as NASA watched the presidential election, um, the, the, the eighth of, of August. And now the NASA leader is demanding an unconditional withdrawal of the changes to the electoral laws before he can agree to participate in the repeat presidential election on the twenty-sixth of October. So your bare minimums, because first it was I B C, now it's the electoral laws.
And what I, what Jubilee has done is dash to Parliament to start bringing some new amendments that are going to affect our process. We are in a field match, doing football. And when you are almost midfield, you come and change the rules of the game. Does it happen? It's, I thought this is common sense and you don't have to be a professor of law.
Because they have the numbers in Parliament.
And you don't have to be, that's what you're saying. You don't have to be a professor of law to understand those are very basics, that you cannot change the rules of the game when you are midway.
This is the same NASA which went to call one week before elections of eighth and demanded some, and made some demand. And now, now they're on the other side, they are saying you cannot change when you are close to an election.
Which is, which is a question that I've pu, I've, I've, I've put forward to a panelist here in studio before, whether or not you, as NASA, are not reading this ruling selectively. On one hand, you are comfortable with the annulment of the August eighth presidential election. But on the other hand, you do not want the body that is mandated to carry out this repeat exercise, to carry it out as it is currently constituted.
There is no contradiction. You don't expect Supreme Court to come and say, Mr. So-and-so, Peter is wrong here, Lilian is right here. No, what we are saying is that there were some mistakes in the process. And there were functions that were led by some people. We are saying, who is in charge of this particular function? It was so-and-so who was sitting in that office during an election. Take responsibility. Then what we are saying is that, are you, who is the CEO of that institution? Take responsibility.
You should ask for permission to design.
The same argument, sorry, the same argument that you have with Jubilee insofar as the amendments to the electoral law being done so, uh, close to the election, we, uh, Jubilee can also ask, what is it about these individuals running this, uh, electoral body that you have a problem with? And you know full well that to re-establish the constitution of now the commissioners and other individuals in the I B C will take a very long process that according to the law is supposed to take a couple of months, almost a year.
Are we saying that we, without Chiloba, we cannot have an election in this country? Are we saying that without a particular individual in I B C, we cannot have an election? We are supposed to have an institution that is independent in nature to have an election in this country. And that's what we are saying. Some of those, take responsibility of some of these failures. How do you allow somebody who mismanaged, for example, transmission of results as an I T and you are professional, to again hold the same responsibility in an, in a, in a repeat election? The same person?
And we'll be talking about these excessive demands, um, on the I B C and whether or not the I B C, they, they are excessive. At least that's what, um, election observers are saying, um, in this communicate here. I'll be reading it out to you very shortly. Let's cross over to the Nairobi University Parkland's campus now. Student leaders there also voicing their opinion over the closure of the institution following protests that started last week over the arrest of Babu Owino, the Mbakasi East Member of Parliament. The institution has been closed indefinitely today after, um, the school's administration, the, the university's administration cited security concerns. Let's listen in.
That is not the issue. Excuse me, excuse me people, excuse me people.
Let's talk the talk.
Yes, I am a student. Excuse me guys, excuse me guys, let me speak for us. It is the administration case, I am a student. Excuse me guys, listen, it is a student, let me speak. I am telling the students, keep quiet. No, 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 Simon, no. Uh-uh. Uh, 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 you're not even a student. Excuse me, this is the issue. Excuse me, excuse me, it's not about politics, no. I am a fourth year student of the law. And currently, Sonu is not even functional. I am the class rep for the fourth year and we have other students of the law here. Our issue is not even politics.
Students of Nairobi University there, um, those are some of the student leaders. Remember, as we had earlier mentioned to you, the...